What is the evening, June 18? Board of Education meeting is called a work session called the War of the Board of Education is compliance for chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975 entitled the Oak Public Beans Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in our hall, our meeting post office, Mary Bold School, Bailey and Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Rary Public School District website. We will do the pleasurable agents at our regular session during the evening. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Mr. Buckheim.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Barry.
Ms. Penzarella.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Terrell.
Here.
Ms. Baldi.
Also present for the workshop session is our superintendent, Innucci, our school business administrator, board secretary, Dr. McCarron, business consultant is not here at this time, principal from Bingham, Mr. Azzi, Mr. Peely, principal Volts. Okay, Ms. Childsistic teen is here, and Mr. Bruner, supervisor.
Ms. Heinz, not here.
I think it's back up, let me see, sir.
She'll be here. Not yet, not yet.
Okay, this evening, Mr. Garrison is here, Garrison texts to discuss some of the project presentation. We pushed this meeting back, so we thank you for being scheduled to come out and wear your suit jacket, 95 degrees. Thank you for coming. I don't have anything else, I'll let you take it away. If you had any questions during the presentation, I'm sure Mr. Garrison will answer them.
Just so you know, we have been approved for the three rock grants that dealt with health and safety, which is what he'll be going over today. We will not be doing anything with those rock grants at this time during the 14, 15 school year because we need, we want to make sure that we have our local share to meet the grant amount that we need. So we do have 18 months from the time the grant is issued to actually act on the grant, which means what he's discussing today will be taking place after July 1st, 2015. So it will be next year at this time is when we'd be going into working out on the rock grants that way, okay?
Great, thanks, Tom. Okay, and it's good to meet many of you. I know we've met over the years in committee, and I guess, you know, I always start this presentation by being thankful, thankful that the district had hired me back in 2010, and thankful that we started a process of identifying projects within the district. So tonight's presentation with the moving picture, which I'll have a look into, is really, what is it, why were we ready? And I talked about the fact that we had established a long-range facility plan in 2010, why was that important? What was the New Jersey funding mechanism that we're going to talk about tonight, and what is the timing associated with that? What projects did we apply for at each of the schools? That would be Bingham and Downing Elementary Schools, as well as projects here at Mary Bold School. And what are the approved projects, and the cost analysis, and a kind of time schedule for the completion of those projects? It all starts with the Corzine administration passing legislation in 2008. July 2008 provided $3.9 billion worth of funding. And the $3.9 billion worth of funding was really a result of previous legislation, which was the first landmark legislation called the Educational Facility Construction Financing Act. In 2000 it was $8.6 billion. That money got used up in an accelerated process from 00 to 05, burned right through it in five years. So when state government talked about re-approving and talking to Corzine about putting another $3.9 billion up, the disbursement of the money was going to be in different rounds. And so when I talk about rounds of funding. So it was important when the application period opened up for the fourth round, because with the legislation in '08, we had rounds in nine and 10, two rounds in nine and one in 10. Christie came into office after 10 and suspended the program. So we didn't have any rock grants available to us. That's why we were doing the planning behind the scenes with the long-range facility plan. And so what happened statewide was quite remarkable to me, because the application period opened on June 3rd, June 3rd, 2013, and lasted through basically labor debt. So in the dead of summer, state government opens up a program to accept applications for matching school facility funding when my boards of educations don't even meet regularly during those months? Thank God you did, and you were in a position to pull the trigger on some project. Well, statewide, much to my surprise, there's 2,100 applications that were submitted. There were 1,538 approved. Yeah, that means 600 people got turned away at the door up there because their projects weren't eligible. They didn't match what the state criteria was. 331 districts received $507 million. Running the school district and the taxpayers of this community garnished a state share of $1.8 million. That's the number that you see in green. So we've got almost $2 million in matching school facility money, money that the taxpayers here paid into, and we were able to go and return it back to them. The project application was quite clear. These were going to be Level 1 projects. They were going to replace essential building systems. What's that? That's our mechanical, electrical, plumbing, or fire protection system. Another priority, the second priority, was building schemes. Roofing, windows, and doors, sounds very familiar to the needs that we have here in these facilities. Building code issues, interior doors, ADA compliance hazardous material, security and communications, and then we drop down to playgrounds and additional classroom space. So the projects, when we started thinking about the type of projects that we wanted to put into the application, we knew that they had to match up with Level 1. So we went fishing a little bit, and I'll explain that in a minute. But at Bingham Elementary School, our long-range facility plan told us that we've got nursery restoration to do. We need to re-point the brick and do some sealing on the outside of our building in various areas. We need new exterior doors and hardware. This is not only an aesthetic issue, but obviously a safety issue for our students and our staff. Replace the existing vinyl windows with new aluminum windows, blinds in the glass, low E coating, it's a more durable solution instead of the vinyl product that exists. Protective window guards, that's a natural, because we've got the play areas in the back of the school that are paved. In concert with the window replacement, we've got to take care of the steel window lintels. These are the items that support the brick over top of the windows. What happens is the water runs down, leaks through the brick, and lands on those lintels, and over time they rust. So we're going to replace that as part of the project. So our subtotal is almost $600,000 here at Bingham Elementary School. And then we've got additional soft costs and fees that are on top of that. And they are architect engineering fees, construction contingency. What happens when we open that outside wall and we find something, or a void in the brick, or whatever? We have a 10% contingency for unforeseen conditions. We may even have a clerk of the works or a construction manager firm look over the construction process. We've got legal, bonding, et cetera, et cetera, if we go that route. So the total cost here is $738,050. So what state government does is state government takes the architect's estimate. So it's all the bricks and mortar, the labor and materials to do the job, lots of the soft cost, and this district aid is $55.88 on the dollar. So the local share for this project is $325. It's like going to the checkout lane, and somebody's already paid almost 56% of your bill when you go to checkout. Really, really a great opportunity to get projects done. At Grace Downing School, same thing, nursery restoration, brick painting, exterior doors and hardware, replacing vinyl windows with aluminum windows. And then here, we also have some repairs to the lintels as well. So we've got $360 here. I mentioned in my opening remark that we went fishing. And we went fishing because one of the things that we wanted to do here at Downing was to convert a portion of the boiler room into a new food prep area. Okay, it's been a longstanding project that's been out there. Well, if you go back to the first slide, it had some yellow items that were cut by state government because they got so many applications. They unfortunately cut this out of our program. So we weren't able to get the matching state funding for this prep area, and that's the note that you see here. So here at Grace Downing, we've got a $360,000 project, 201 comes from state government, leaves $158,800, aid is the local share. And this is the area that we're talking about, the double doors here, the new warm-up kitchen, refrigerator countertop, swing-in door. So this is a solution that's out there. We've got state approval for the layout, we just don't have the money right now to pull the trigger. Mary Bold School, this building, a lot more work. We start with nursery restoration. We have exterior doors and hardware in our original building, because we know we've got the 95 wing and 95 addition in the back. Paint the exterior steel doors in the 95 wing, because they still have some useful life. Replace the existing vinyl windows with aluminum windows in the original building, which is the front section here. Replace the existing vinyl windows in the 1995 addition with aluminum windows, blinds in the glass. Clean and paint the existing steel windows and lintels. Original section roof replacement, large item, 46,000 square feet of roofing. On the 1995 section, we're going to provide, put a coating on, so that we extend the life of that roofing system. So that we don't come back to the taxpayers and say, "Well, we didn't do anything with that one roof, because we still had some life left in the warranty, so I'm sorry we got to ask you for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars." No, we're going to take care of that now, so that facilities-wise, you'll have one roofing warranty, one person to call when you have a situation. Metal roof area, snow guards, so the snow doesn't slip when our visitors are coming in, and the back area, gym roof ladder, that'll allow transitions to and from spaces on the high wall. Subtotals $1,008,000, the soft costs, which are eligible $0.55, gives us $2.2 million. Again, we went fishing. Convert the existing home economics, C4, into a new production kitchen, renovation of that room, conversion, and new kitchen equipment. Well, we didn't get that unfortunately as well in the rock grant, we just didn't have enough money. So $2.2 million, 55% state aid, gives us $1 million in local share. And this is that particular room, coming off the hallway, we take out all the existing cabinetry, et cetera, here. We've got our boxes over in this area, and, you know, drive-through storage over in this area. So it's really, the plan's in place, we give it a lot of thought, we have the pricing for it, so it's just a matter of someday raising the funding and taking care of converting that space and doing a new production kitchen. We go to the cost summary, we take Bingham, Downing, and Mary Bold, and it's $3.3 million worth of projects, almost $3.4 is the total. State government has pledged 55.8% or $1.8 million, almost $1.9 million. So the Board of Education has to raise $1.4 million as the local share. The timeline, and a lot of people wondered, "Well, why didn't you pull the trigger on this summer? Why didn't you do something now? What's the whole of it?" Well, as I mentioned, these are the actual dates or the required dates over here. Our building program, cost estimates, and schematics, and application went in on August 27th for the deadline. We didn't need to revise the long-range facility plan we submitted, because these projects were already there. Department of Education issued a PEC offer on one of our schools on December 4th, but they didn't get the other letter out until January 21, after they asked us questions about our cafeteria additions and how much they were going to cost, so they could later cut them from our application. Final eligible cost letters came out on January 21st and February 21st. The grant offers, yeah, they were supposed to come out March and April, it was really late April. We were looking, you know, the district was going to approve their new budget in this old scenario. But here's really the key, the grant agreements, the execution falls into the summer. And, you know, I was just visiting with my board member, Black Horse Pike, it's the same situation. There, we're waiting for these documents to come out, the roofing project, the trident's being held up, the windows can't go into island, we've got contractors screaming, it's a terrible, terrible situation to have to wait. And the key is, state government didn't approve the money until the new year. I can't just turn on a switch, prepare documents, have a bid process, and have people order materials and labor and get ready to go in the middle of gym, it just doesn't happen that day. So I guess by default, your planning of raising money in the future is going to work in our favor, because we're going to have some time to develop the plans and specifications. We'll have a lot of hungry contractors, there wasn't a lot of work done this summer, and we'll proceed in an orderly fashion. The idea is to get the plans ready to go, get it better secured, get the grant signed up, and then proceed with construction. That's really where we are in the process, and, you know, again, I'm excited that you got almost $1.9 million this evening.
Thank you very much. When we met with Bob earlier in the year, Earl Mark and myself, the big issue, as he said, was timing of everything. A big portion of what we're doing is replacing the roof, and that's going to, has to be done during summer months, we can't do that, pieces here and pieces there. So in terms of the timing, getting the contractor and having everything there, we just felt a little bit more confident in the fact that we'd be ready during next year at this time to really make those changes and be fully prepared. So with the window replacements and the roof, we'll be much better about that.
And we'll do it all in organized fashion, right? Do one project over another, because although it's windows on the exterior, you've got job site conditions, lay-down areas, we don't want people tripping over each other, so we can organize it and plan it effectively, so everybody's on the same page. Okay, if you saw some of the slides, the last slide there, some of the work we begin in March of next year. Yes, yeah. And the beauty, and that's a great point, the beauty of that is contractors are hungry. Not everybody can work all in 10 weeks of the year. We just can't do it all in New Jersey. So anything that we can do to give a contractor an opportunity to safely work in our buildings, separate from our students and our staff. And here, the second shift, what do we mean by second shift? Well, the materials are in pause on site. So the custodial staff takes the classrooms, moves the furniture away from the window, the contractor comes in at 3 o'clock, we put up some protection devices, we pull the window out in one night, we have the new windows in a trailer, we do the installation, we caulk it, takes the barrier down, pushes the furniture back, or waits till the staff comes in in the morning, pushes the furniture back, and we hold plants. So we do one unit at a time, in a very orderly fashion. So that was the idea. And it's attractive, because it's work not in the 10 weeks of the summer, it gets them working at different times, when they need the rest, for sure.
Okay, how about these storage pods?
You know, like a pod, like the white pod they would say? The storage tray?
My biggest concern is, is the work going on at Downing, is my window work at Downing?
Yeah.
Right? So my biggest concern is wherever those pods go with the limited space and damage.
Right, right. So in the instructions that we give them, for the project scope or whatever, we can give them a designated lay-down area, so we can tell them where the unit's going to go. We won't leave with a chance, if that's a concern. And the other concerns that you have, if you know that your principals, that we can work in this room, then let's publish that schedule as well. The work sequence is followed. We're going to do 103, we're going to do 205, we're going to, you can dictate those instructions, and then the contractor will know that when they give their pricing. Any other questions?
That was very thorough, thank you.
Thank you, great. Sorry we can't build a huge kitchen front. That's for a different day.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob, we appreciate it.
Also, Dr. Carr, you're going to outline.
Correct.
Dr. Carr is going to present the HIV.
We just took on a different.
Maybe, where did I go wrong?
Okay, at the end of every year, usually twice a year, in December, January, and then at the very end of the year, we have to present, the coordinator for the harassment condition bullying has to present for the districts what our results were for the year and where we are, so that the Board of Education is aware. And then at this point, what we will do is we will submit this to the state with what we'll be doing moving forward. So this is actually what you get in your board packet each month, where it outlines student number, grade level, building, and what the classification it fell under was. So currently, there's four different classifications. Bullying did occur, bullying did not occur, bullying did not occur, and disciplinary action was taken because it was a violation of the code of conduct, and then also insufficient evidence. So what I did was I pretty much took what we had for this year, and I broke down by building where we fell with each one. In Volt, there were a total of 10 HIV cases that were classified as occurring. Just to remind you, any situation of harassment, condition, and bullying could be one single instance. When I was a building level administrator, one thing I would find is that many times it would take place even between friends, or people who got along with each other through misunderstandings, but depending on what was said or how it was said, it might be fall under that category as well. So it just has to be one instance, it might have never happened before, it might not be something that's persistent, but if it happens once, it can still be classified. In Volt, there was three instances where bullying did not occur, but student violated code of conduct, and there were two cases where there was insufficient evidence to add up to an HIV case overall. One thing that I think is interesting is that whereas states bullying did not occur, many times when you see that classified, you see that's only classified in the elementary schools, and a lot of times, that's where there's a peer-to-peer conflict, where they might use the term bullying, but they're not using it appropriately, or if someone's not sharing with them at that one point in time, they're saying, "He's being mean to me, he's bullying me." One thing I stress to Mrs. Beta and Ms. Callahan this year also, and those are our two school specialists who investigate the HIV cases with the assistance of the administration, was the fact that we need to make sure that we're reporting everything that's given to us, and that we're doing a full investigation each time that that happens. So it's interesting that bullying did not occur was in Bingham and Downing is where you see those two specifically. Whereas as you get older, the students have a better understanding of what bullying is, what picking on students is. So in Volt, there were a total of 15 incidents reported, in Bingham there were three, and in Downing there were three. In one case in Bingham, it did not occur, two cases with insufficient evidence, and in Downing, two cases where it did not occur, and one case where it did not occur, but student violated code of conduct. The district is obligated to investigate all reports, all documented reports about students within one grade level of one another. I thought that was important to report to you, since Volt does have grades 4 through 8. So when we looked and were reporting cases of HIV, I wanted to make sure it was very clear that it did not happen or take place between a 4th and a 6th grader, or a 4th and an 8th grader. It happened most times within the same grade level, or walking to school where it might be a kindergarten student and a first-grade student, or within different families, walking together. This year, students received an assembly, classroom lessons on bullying. All schools also implemented Diaries character education programs, which will be continuing next year. The staff members were involved in professional development, and they participated in all student activities related to bullying, peer-to-peer relations, and those types of activities. Parents were provided with information regarding bullying and signs to look for. We had parental programming that was offered, and we offered that during the daytime and also the evening. That was some of the parent programs that we held during the school year that you approved, which we will continue for next year. Next year, we will continue with those programs, that programming for students, staff, and One group that I am bringing in on October 17th of next year is South Jersey Youth Alliance, and they go into many districts throughout South Jersey, they bring in presenters. One of the presenters they will be bringing in next year for us is Seth Franco, he's a former Harlem Globetrotter. And what's nice about the program is that they will do three school assemblies within one day. They will do a parent event that evening, where families will come out for an event, and a performance will be done, and then of course, they drive it home with the message of how we treat each other, what to look for with bullying, how to help your students. And also, staff professional development will continue to be provided during the 14, 15 school year to what to look for, how to address certain situations, and what needs to be reported and what doesn't need to be reported. Because in many cases, in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, we can bring a situation down instead of escalating it a little bit more and taking the preventative measures, so it doesn't reach a certain point. And that's really what we're looking to do. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Out of these 10 total bullying occurrences, were any of these reoccurring students, students that bullied multiple times, or at least like 10 separate incidents?
The only thing, there was no, what I found was it was not double occurrences with the same individual students. Did we have one student who had multiple times, but with different, different people each time? There were certain cases in that, at which point Ms. Callahan and Ms. Beta would be working with that student a little bit more to, you know, provide strategies and different ways of dealing with situations in a positive manner.
Okay, that's a good thing to know. And also, can you give me some examples of the difference between a violated code of conduct versus a bullying incident?
A bullying incident, okay, so many times it might be classified as, it's brought to you as a bullying incident. And what will happen is, you then have to investigate, which means you speak to the person, you find out everyone who's involved. When you speak to the people and everyone who's involved, what you might find out is the fact that what they did wasn't appropriate, but guess what? This has been going on between the two students all year long. So you and Mr. Buckheim have been arguing all year long, but then you walk in on Monday and you say, "I'm done, I'm not going to be involved anymore." Mr. Buckheim doesn't know this, so he goes right back at you and says something to you. You walk up to the principal, Ms. Davidson, and you say, "He's bullying me." She investigates, but Mr. Buckheim's like, "What? She said this to me, she did this to me, she shoved me, she shoved me down on Sunday." So in that situation, what he did was inappropriate and might be against code of conduct now that it's reported, but at the same time, it wouldn't be bullying, because it isn't an isolated situation where he has power over. And many times, that's a difficult concept for students to understand, is the fact that-
Like they're stealing lunch money, or you're-
So sometimes you develop a situation that you need, you need to own what you've developed and try to move away from it. You can't just say, with no one else involved, "Okay, well, I'm going to do good, I'm going to do well today." That's great, how are you communicating that to your peers, who you've now developed this relationship with? Mr. Buckheim, we're never bullying him.
Yeah, he'll bully me all the time. I've known that man for years.
Any other questions?
Did you see a reduction compared to the previous year's numbers? Is it about the same, less?
When I looked at it, it was a little bit more than previous years. Coming in, this was my first year in the district, we had new administration as well, I worked very closely with Ms. Beta and Ms. Callahan, and I was very specific about what I was looking for with reports coming in. So I think now that we're able to see the reports that did come in, and we kind of know what we need to target, and different grade levels that we need to target, I feel like we have a better idea to try to do a reduction next year.
Sometimes it's nice to see that kids are reporting things, right? Kids, they figure themselves, it's hiding, so it's always a double edged sword there, but I don't think the numbers were too far off, but it's nice to see that the kids that they're being treated are speaking up for themselves. But we're still not in here.
Now, do you have any instances where other students will report a bullying situation they may see between two others?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that, to me, that's more important.
We've had instances where parents have called up, even if it's not their own child, but they know their child came home concerned about someone else. I mean, all those instances were investigated to make sure that it's there. And that's where sometimes you'll see the insufficient evidence because it's not in.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Should we also discuss this now? Run through this and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, next action we need to be taking right now is I need a motion on the floor to approve the special session minutes of May twenty-first, work session, May twenty-first.
No motion.
No motion at this time.
Just a question.
Just, all right, any questions on any of those you have to take a look at?
Oh, our session's relaxed?
Yeah.
Mark was saying it.
Special session, work session, we're in the meeting of executive session. If there are none, you can move on to the financial report. Any questions there? Kevin, you had our presentations. How about all the reports? We'll start with the secretary's report. We have the report, huh?
Your monthly drink order report, is that where we are?
We're right now on the secretary's report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Warren, there it is.
Hi, we see Warren.
Our secretary of smalls, if anyone is familiar with it. Number eight, it says we're completing meetings with Camden County Authority for rad grants and opportunities they have available. Do they have other opportunities available besides the...
One example available. Number eight of my board secretary report, I did attend a meeting with Camden County Improvement Authority, who works with many districts, Rowan and Rutgers University in Camden. And what they did was they tried to bridge the gap. And a lot of times, they will go out for offers so that way they can find different vendors who can help. Another thing that they've done is also looked for different financing opportunities, so ways to get bonds. Whereas if we get them with a group and a conglomerate, we could get a better rate in terms of what we would be paying versus getting it on our own and having to go out for a referendum for that. So they were discussing that right now in terms of the financing component. They are looking for different programs to put together. So they do have, you know, our information if anything becomes available, they'll be reaching out to me for that.
Anything with the superintendent's report? Questions there?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Working on summer meeting scheduled for three schools. I just had a request to Butch, if he can do this, we need to, only because I, I noticed that picking up my plans on a family, the Second Avenue, the steps at Second Avenue side of the playground, there's major soil erosion going down on the side of that step. I don't know whether we can problem solve that, but it's, it's going to be a huge safety issue if it continues. Will you just check that? Okay.
You were talking about the buildings and grounds report, not the superintendent's, correct?
No, this was under Mark's... Yes, I'm sorry, I was doing it again.
Okay, that's all right.
Sorry about that. I'm just looking to superintendent.
That's all right. Anyone else with questions on, we'll stick with that, with the grounds, building grounds?
No question.
Unless you're ever...
No, I'm with Mark. I'm going to go with Hope this month, Mark.
Okay. How about, let's go back to the superintendent's report. Any questions on the superintendent's report?
All right, child, that's enough.
I have one.
Sure.
All the summer hours, which is very common. All school districts basically go to a four-day work week in the summer. Basically, don't want to read in here, does that mean that the facilities are closed down on Fridays?
No, they're rotating, steadily with the maintenance employees as well. I wonder if you do this because maintenance works, they either work Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday. So on Fridays, when like the office staff isn't there, they can knock you out, see if they'll do some more planning, do some more technical.
What about the office, like if someone with the contact on Friday?
The office is closed on Friday.
Policies are closed, yes.
Okay. And we will be using the administrative assistants at Bingham and Downing to do, we talked about earlier last year. We did, we moved that from ten to twelve month employees for the summertime. They will be coming over here on certain days with assistance with some district projects that we have going on. There might be some days where they might not be available at this building as well.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions?
It's just a call before we begin.
We have that stuff posted, we have posted on Facebook.
All right, how about the principals' reports? Bingham and Downing, anything there?
I just have a really quick question. I've noticed this before, actually. For the fire drills, it's taken about five to six minutes for the kids to get out, it looks like. Doesn't it feel like it's like a normal long time to get out of school, five to six minutes?
Not on a penalty where there's three cases there.
So is it because there's like not so many doors to get out of those two schools that it's been so long or...
Are you still using all three doors?
Yeah, we are. And I will say it's somewhat of a whole, I mean, with it being orderly, there is like a little bit of a waiting process. Like when I'm watching, like you have to almost like, okay, let's wait till Ms. Majewski's class gets through. I would say during the drills, it's orderly, but it is a little slower, probably just because of the way that the building is structured. Amazing with kids, you know, each step takes a little bit longer. And I agree though, because I always look at Volt, I'm like, oh my God, two, three. I agree, but I think that's just the reality.
They have no steps.
Right.
No steps, no doors, no steps, no door, and they were children.
On, you know, top floors, the bathroom, you know, usage and everything. So we are waiting a little bit, but it is orderly and we count for all, you know, all students before reentering. But I, I do agree. It seems a little long, but at the time, it's just kind of like safe and orderly and accountable now.
Any other questions? Volt's school, principals' report?
Good question.
Everybody's off the hook this month. Aren't you happy? It's like, listen, I've seen... Yeah, I did.
Supervisor, curriculum instruction?
I remember seeing that.
Oh, yes, I did, I did, I did, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question. Sean, what is G C N?
Global Compliance Network.
Compliance Network, okay, I'm trying my hardest to...
All officials' employees completed as of yesterday? We got, that's basically, you know, floodwater packages and also just every district employee have to do that.
Oh, okay.
One thing we will be looking at for next year is the possibility of using a program called Safe Schools, which is through our insurance group, but we need to see if it has the same requirements that we use through G C N as well. Make sure that...
Anything with the nurses' reports? Any questions there?
Other questions for me?
Buildings and grounds report?
Well, we already dealt with that.
Way to go, babe. Special education report? Any questions there?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Evil, one end to property and transportation. As you bring through the items, the agenda items, if you have any questions, item one through five.
The worst, question number one.
Updates on that.
Oh, okay, all maybe. I'll talk about Saint Teresa's basketball team using the all-purpose room. Are there specific nights of the week or is this every night we're approving them to use the all-purpose room?
They have, they have specific nights that they're going for, not conflicted with R Y A. So R Y A does Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, so it might be Tuesday evenings.
Okay, so do you know conflicts with...
No, it's been similar now. It's good that we're getting this stuff completed tonight.
Sure. I just didn't have any problems dealing with that.
Anyone else? All right, just one through five. Okay, personnel. Personnel, we have a lot of work to do.
Yes, I have Ruby Joel over three. Is this a new service manager or was she the manager before? I, just give me a little history here of what's going on with the, because I know we shifted food services again.
Ruby Joel is our previous food service manager when Nutriserve was here.
Okay.
So as of right now, what her responsibility would be, would be making sure, she'd be the middle person between us and Black Forest, like regional, she would be making sure menus are compliant with what's needed to go out each month, lunch tickets, making sure all the supplies are in place, and working with our cafeteria staff.
Okay, so she's here every day?
Yes.
Am I...
Yes, when we worked at Black Forest, like, before we retired, we were in this position as well.
Right.
We liked Nutriserve, we had this person that we paid, Nutriserve, who paid them.
Paid them, okay.
So at least for them with our system, she does a great job of all three buildings. The staff is rather set her to her.
Okay.
Excited that she applied for the position.
Okay, so, so we still have no connection to Nutriserve strictly with our...
She's, yeah, I'm sorry, she no longer works for that.
Okay.
I actually only have one question on that too. If our good date is going to be a long time to stop, do we need to...
Yes.
Do something that's no idea.
We'll be posting for a long construction, we need the three school to have them.
You should, it's a question. I know, you'd rather...
Anyone else? Okay, next section is launched, the finance section. Thirty-six items there. Any questions at this time?
I have questions to number two, professional development workshops, the very first academy. What is the scope of this particular training session?
Ms. Hines, would you like to give a little brief summary of Wilson Training, which is taken place...
It's the Wilson Reading Program, which is a multi-century reading program, which we have, have had in the district. It's a Wilson, it's an instructional program that we've had in the district that over the years, we have less and less teachers that are trained in the program to use it. So we have, it's a really great research data-driven program. So we brought in someone to, you have to go through Wilson, and you have to have a Wilson-trained person to do that training. So she's doing a three-day overview with our teachers so that they can use the materials and continue to teach the program. Because over the years, we've had some teachers that have left that had that training in the past. So at the end of it, they'll be able to do small group teaching of reading using the Wilson Reading Program, which we have fundations and the Wilson currently.
Okay. I misunderstood. When I looked at that preview, I thought it was only these two people. That was called my attention.
Yeah.
On the other page, it says up to twenty.
And it's general and then special, I missed. It's, the teachers, like, discipline.
And I do want to give, you know, give credit to the teachers that are coming back tomorrow and Friday for their training. They're not being... They'll back on their own time, right, because they're doing that. It is a great...
Any other questions? We have thirty-six items there.
All of you are listed as one of the last ones. Words to mention in October.
I have a question for numbers seven and nine, I guess. Well, I don't think it's on my preview, just to make sure it's on you to get back. For archway schools, charging students reduced or paid meals? What is it, just a before and after school program?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
This is just a resolution that we're not requiring them to charge students?
This archway program is for our special, special, student population with special needs. It states that it's a part of their educational program because feeding is part of their I E Ps. So the staff members at, this is not just kids, this is the archway, it's an archway program where our students are sent. So this is allowing them to use breakfast and lunch, not charge them, because it's actually a part of their program and their education.
Okay, right, right. So this is, these are children out of district, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And then number nine, increase the payment for prep time for a student...
One of our students, we have to pay an hourly rate for their education because they're not receiving their education in run amok. As a part of that rate for the placement that they receive, we have to pay a daily prep rate for the teacher to prepare lessons for the student that they're receiving. It's a part of the contract for the program that they're in. When we got the contract, we simply had you approve it for the dollar amount for the hours of education. However, it was further stated that a prep time needed to be included for the teacher at this rate for X number of days, which is where we came up with the not to exceed $100, depending on the length of placement for that student.
So their hourly rate does not include your prep times, what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, that's a new one, right? Okay, just to kind of throw it out there for numbers, that's a new one.
But that's...
No, it's in their contract.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard. Even when we have like a teacher of the deaf that comes in, they charge us like .33 for travel time, prep time on every hour.
Right, but would they, wouldn't that be part of their negotiated contract? That they're negotiating their travel time, their prep time, their hourly teaching time with that particular student?
Yeah, it's a, it's a service that provides that tutoring for like an outside treatment facility, and it's what they charge that facility. We don't really have a choice.
Not a sale.
It is what, that's what they, that's, we have to provide the tutoring at that facility, and that's who does it, and that's what they charge.
And the hourly rate that we're getting charged is based on our hourly rate that we would pay our own teachers for home instruction. So it's not a separate that they give, but we then have to pay that additional, as Lloyd was saying, the .33 for each hour of instruction that they're given.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to that?
I just have one more, number twenty. As far as shared services through state agencies, I just, what services do, again, do we share with Sterling High School?
Sterling High School offers a number of shared services when it comes to H V A C. It's a list of things that they have as a shared service agreement. Many times, it's, it doesn't hurt us to approve them, but what it allows us to do is if, let's say, we had something burst in one of our buildings, they would be already approved for us to go to, and they would already have the bids and the individuals we could go to to get those items fixed.
So this is something above and beyond our maintenance crew?
Correct.
Yes, agreed, bud, you agree?
It's rare, but it may happen.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure.
If there are no further questions, let's move on to curriculum. Any concerns there? Item one through four.
I just have one, number four, with Alyssa Juliana, who's going to start the fall year with the second year as of August twenty-fifth, when we're not in the building.
That's when, that's when their course starts.
Oh, okay.
So that's why...
So we're really not accountable for her until we actually begin, okay?
But she, she can come in to help set up classroom, things like that. Teachers can't come back, but...
Right, okay, thank you.
Policies, public relations, which was there?
No questions?
Okay, any questions? Talking about the next board meeting date, we don't have a meeting scheduled for July. We just do have a meeting scheduled for August twentieth. Now, last year, we did a board retreat during the day in August. I talked to Mrs. Spelling as well as Mr. Buckheim about possibly having that retreat and meeting on the same day. Be interested in that, check availability. We're doing the retreat during the day, maybe take an hour break, and then follow up with the board meeting. That could be anytime you, if you wanted to do a twelve to two retreat or a three o'clock board meeting, we could do that or... Collection thing.
That'll be August twenty.
That'll be August twenty.
What day will you decide that it's Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
I think we have three more members that are working this morning.
Yes, last year, we had a board retreat, I know a lot of you, but they did take off work for the day, but I understand.
I'll use any excuse to take off. I'll be there.
How about, how about the president? Okay.
She's checking, that's what I had.
Check, you know, that's coming through right now, we can look and break the announcement. Also, you received a, quite frankly, you received a rough copy, sort of a little bit new board member handbook. Um, that is going to be posted online, um, and unfortunately, I'd like to attach table contents to that as well. I want to thank Mr. Buckheim, um, this is there, Mr. Villa, for all the input on that. We've spent several months working on that. It's going to be a great asset, I know we have future projects coming in and trying to explain. It's a live document, so if there's something, I'd like to be here tonight, if there's something you go through and you're reading it over time, or say, you know what, it'd be great to add, you can always update that, that'll be, you know, out there with the updates.
This is also something we wanted to go electronic place, so we're not bringing out booklets and booklets and booklets, saving paper and, uh, ink. It'll be available to be read on the computer, but we, uh, I want to also thank Pat and Lynn and Mark because it took a lot of effort and, uh, everyone had input. Hopefully, all the board members, as you know, have definitely approved it. And what we can do is when we meet in August, we can probably approve the document that we used. We'll be ready for it, and we'd like the board members to come, election time. Here we can. We can approve that? We can approve that or you guys can...
No, I think they need to, now, I think it's fair, the board members, the other board members to look through it first, I mean, we want that.
Okay, okay. We will let them read it.
That's just my opinion, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I would agree with you on that one. I, I'd like to give them a time to really go through it, because there may be something we...
They want to.
That feels important that we have missed.
Exactly.
Sure, because this is the first time we've really seen a completed document.
Okay, um, the only other thing is also off of the school website, um, if you click on the Board of Education tab, you'll now see a members login. Um, I gave each of you directions as far as how to sign in with the members login. So only certain individuals, board members and administration are able to log into that area. In that area, one of the things that we might be posting would be your Board of Education handbook as far as as a new board member, different items that you might need to know. Um, but so that way, it wouldn't be available to the pu, public at that moment. Um, and then also in there would be, one thing I did this evening was I put the agenda and every single attachment that you normally receive, um, each Friday, um, prior to a board meeting. So moving forward, if you would like to not receive a full packet, you could let me know, because what I will be doing is putting all those items online. And then we could have either, um, a laptop or an iPad available to you at the day of the meeting, um, to view it here as well. If you like paper and you'd like to hold paper, that's perfectly fine, we can make those copies still. But at least now, this is another option for you to...
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Through, um, through this study, Sean, we'll be able to use our own devices at home to log into, okay?
So I gave you two directions as far as how to log in at home, um, and you will have access to that.
Great, thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to, uh, close this meeting. Then we'll come back together at seven to five, give anyone opportunity if they need to use the facilities.